Okay.
That's cool.
So, it's saying, "Remaining in Christ's Word, or holding to His teachings, is not a one-time action." And if you, if you, if you watch people, a lot of people think that, you know, "I'll just pray this one time and, you know, that settles it." But the Bible says that we should be praying all the time, and for, for everything, for all kinds of reasons.
That's true.
So, have you ever read your Bible, closed it, and felt, and felt self-satisfied? And said, "Wow, now that's done," as if it was a chore?
It shouldn't be.
It shouldn't be. This is not a task that is accomplished and then you set it aside indefinitely. Remaining in His Word, or holding to His teachings, means His Word is so much a part of your life that it is like the air you breathe. And that's something that I'm growing into every day. You know, memory verses, I know a lot of us, I know when I was younger, the church that I attended used to give us memory verses. And it might be kind of hard for us to, to memorize verses, especially at this age. But I've had instances where I was in a conversation with somebody ministering, and all of a sudden, the Scripture just came, and it was just crystal clear. And I'm like, "Wow, I can't believe I remembered that Scripture." So, another good way to memorize Scripture is to, you know, write them out, you know, put them in different locations of the house. You know, if you, if you go into the bathroom every morning and look in the mirror, you gotta look, my mother used to do this. I would go in her washroom, and she would have these little verses, you know, all over the place. And so, do whatever you need to do to help yourself alone, because they do come in handy. So, memory verses, like John 8:31 through 32, is a very important verse. Somebody want to read that?
If you hold to My teaching, you are really My disciples.
Disciples.
Disciples, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Then you will know the truth, and the truth will set you free.
So, if you really meditate on this particular Scripture, and Veronica, what do you get out of this Scripture?
Where do I get it out?
What do you get out of that? When you, read it again, and tell me what you got out of that?
If you hold to My teaching...
Stop right there, what does that mean? "If you hold to My teaching."
Read it again.
I'm, I'm helping Veronica to think, because I, we need to sometimes just think it through.
It's all right, guys.
If you, if you hold to My teaching. So, you know what that means to me? If you keep My teaching. Whatever He teaches you, if you hold on to it and walk in it, that's what that means.
You are already My disciple. Then you will know the truth, and the truth will set you free.
That, that touches you? You want to share?
Because it's the truth. And I, and I keep, and I've been reading it and reading it. And it does...
Do you like the new Bible?
Huh?
Didn't she give you a new Bible?
Yeah, I meant to ask you about that. Is that easier for you?
Is it helping you?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, good.
Did you bring it with you?
No.
No? Okay.
I was hoping that that would help you.
Yeah.
Yeah, it did, yeah, because I, I read this one, and then I read it, that Bible that Joanne gave me. So, yes.
I remember when I first got saved, and, and I read this verse. I said, "You know, this is something special about this verse. If you hold to My teaching..." "If," it says, "if..."
It's a choice.
Yes, it's a choice. "If you hold to My teaching, you are really My disciples."
And it's also covered in it. You do this, and I'll do that.
"Then you will know the truth." So, you know, as a new Christian, when you read something like that, I'm thinking, "You mean to tell me I didn't know the truth before?" You know, I was thinking like that. The truth about what? You know, all those things, thoughts were coming through my mind. What, what are, what are they talking about here? "Then you will know the truth, and the truth will set you free." So, I lived a long time, not really understanding what this was, but I knew it was important. And the longer I was a Christian, and the more I studied, then He started showing me. You know, with me, first I learned the Scripture. But it's one thing to just know the Scripture book. You keep walking, you keep studying, you'll start walking in it. Things will start happening to you that's in the Scripture.
It doesn't happen overnight either.
No, it doesn't.
You know, like we're all still works in progress, even at our age.
Right.
You know, learn something.
Remember, remember the very first time, when, when I started coming to the Bible studies? How I was praying and praying and praying, and God wasn't answering me? And now, and, and it wasn't going to happen overnight. And now, I started, you know, praying, you know, asking Him why this or why that, and boom, boom, like this.
I was, um, I don't, I don't know if anybody thought like me, but, you know, when I wanted to really see and test God's Word, to see if it was really true.
That's what I...
And I remember I was backed up against the wall, and I'm thinking, "Okay." You know, everybody's bragging about the Bible. Everybody's saying all these good things about God. And, and I remember distinctly having this conversation with God, saying, "Okay, if you, if you're really who everybody is saying you are, and with your word, I said, "Then reveal yourself to me." And it's just like you say, it doesn't happen overnight.
No, it doesn't.
And so, I was determined. I said, "Okay, I'm just going to do everything that this thing is directing me to say." And then, you know, I was getting to certain parts of the Scripture, I said, "No human being could say this." It was teaching principles that to me, a human being on their own could never know. You know, it was like a treasure to me. I'm thinking, "No human being can think like this."
A treasure box.
That's what it is. You know, I was mad at me.
You said it's a treasure, it's like a treasure box. You open it up, and, and the more you read, the more these jewels and nuggets that you find as you go along.
Exactly. And in my thoughts, I was thinking, "No human being could, could write this on their own like this." This had to be divine. And so, that's what encouraged me to keep going. And then, once I started experiencing His Word, you know, a, a few things that popped up that I got curious about, that I really wanted to know. I wanted to know about when they were casting out demons in people. I said, "They don't talk about this in church." This is when I was in the Baptist church, you know. I said, "They don't talk about this."
They don't talk about it in most churches.
Why don't they talk about this?
In the Baptist church now.
I said, "Why don't they talk about this?" And so, I started questioning people, you know. People looking at me like, I said, "Well, if it's in the Bible..." And then, the other thing was the speaking in tongues thing. I wanted to know about that. And it was just other things that were popping up that I was reading. And I said, "I'm never going to find that here, because they don't talk about it."
They don't believe in it.
And, um, so...
Old times.
I remember I was at this Baptist church, and it was, we were all up at the altar praying. And all of a sudden, the pastor's sister started crying. And it got out of control. And I said, "Something more is going on here than just her personal hurt." She got louder and louder. And then, I just felt in my spirit I should take her out of the sanctuary and go pray with her. So, as I was walking her out, she turned into something else. And I'm like, "Oh, this is more." I said, "This is the Bible coming alive, right here in this Baptist church." And I got her out there in the hall, outside the sanctuary, and I started rebuking the devil. And people were coming out there to see what I was doing. And I said, "Okay, I'm in it now." You know, I just started rebuking. And people were looking at me like, "What is she doing?" You know? And she stopped. So, I'm just saying, um, the Bible is real. There's things that happen. I don't know if any of you have ever come in contact with a demonic, uh, person that's possessed.
Oh, yeah.
But that girl was possessed, I kid you not.
That's not funny.
It was, it was, it was an experience for me. And after that, I said, "I'm not going to learn what I need to know." I knew I needed to know some more about what I was reading in the Scripture, and I wasn't going to get it there. I knew that. So, that's why I moved on.
That's a good reason.
Yeah.
It took, I was saying to myself, "Well, why, why..." I told, I told somebody from here, "He doesn't want to answer me. Then, is he mad at me?" And that person said, "No, he's not mad at you. It's not going to happen overnight. Give it time, he will listen to you."
He will. He will.
He always listens to you.
Valerie, I was raised in a Baptist church too. And, um, you know, my, you've heard my story. I was married to a man that wasn't a Christian, became a Christian before he passed away. But after that, I really started reading my Bible, and Acts just really, when I started reading the book of Acts, I'm going, "They haven't been teaching me any of this stuff in the church."
And when I was reading, I felt like I was actually in it.
Yeah, I thought I was there. You know, I was listening to Peter. You know, I was right there, and I go, and then I, I already knew Joanna David, they had ministered to, to, my husband, before he passed away. And I just decided that this is where I needed to be. Well, when I told my mom and dad that I was going, and they were in a Presbyterian church, and that's about the, that's the thing you can get into. That I was going to go to a First Assembly, they go, "But they speak in tongues." I said, "Mom, it's biblical. Read Acts, it's biblical." But they think, the Baptists thought it was for old times, but it's in the New Testament, you know. And so, I said, "Mom, it's, there's so much that we've missed, you know, being raised in the Baptist church." And I'm not saying anything against you. And then, later on, as, as I got, became more involved in the church, she says, "Do you speak in tongues?" I said, "I have a prayer language, but I've, I've never given a message in tongues. But I do have a prayer language," you know. And she said, "Do you think I want to go to hell or not?" I said, "No, you're not going to..."
You know, it's just so misunderstood.
Oh, it's a misunderstood thing, you know. And she really wanted to, I said, "Mom, you're not going to go to hell. You know, trust me, I know how you raised, what you believe and everything. You know, you're fine. But it, it's just that I knew that I needed more, like you did." Because it, it just didn't, the Baptist church just didn't...
The Holy Spirit has to reveal that.
Valerie, they never prayed for healing. They never prayed for rebuke of a, of a demonic spirit like you were... They never talked about speaking in tongues. They never talked about any of this stuff.
They're laying hands on people.
Laying hands on people?
Expecting to get healed.
Coming up to the altar to be healed, to be prayed for or anything? No! It was the same song, "Just as I am." They sang that song every Sunday, "Just as I am without one plea," for an altar call. You know, and that was it. They never asked for prayer, like pastor does. You know, it was, it was empty, and I did not realize it till I got into a Pentecostal church.
Uh, when my mother passed away, uh, well, she got really sick. I had all respect for her pastor. I really did. Because he was my pastor at one time, until I left. And I, and I wasn't angry at anybody. I just knew I needed to go. So, you know, he often wondered, you know, he just always asked me, "Why did I leave?" And I said, "Because the Lord wants to send me somewhere else." I said, "It's something else I'm supposed to learn." You know, and that's what I would always say. But when my mother got sick, I needed somebody with some power to come in there and pray for her.
That's right.
Somebody that knew how to, how to touch her soul and give her peace. And I could do it, but I was too close. I felt like I was too close. So, I called the powerhouse people that can pray, that could come in there, you know. And, and, and that's what I did. Even though he came and they prayed, you know, the church was constantly in and out of my door. But it's something with the Pentecostal, um, setting. The, the ones that believe in the five-fold ministry. You know, you got the Baptists, they don't believe in the five-fold ministry.
They reject that.
There's no more prophets.
No.
You know, there's no apostles.
They're not the only ones.
You know, I don't, I don't.
Everybody's the main line of church.
Everybody but the Pentecostal.
So...
All of them.
But anyway, that's, that's where I am. I'm not mad at them, it's just that I think people, when you get to a certain point, you graduate to the next level.
Yeah.
You know?
And if you're praying that prayer, "Lord, I want more of you."
Yeah.
He's going to lead you out.
Yeah.
Where, where you're not getting that more.
Right. And so, um, but anyway, here, this, this verse is so important. And you know, because you, you, you're living it, you're walking in it. So, there's different stages of your growth. So, whatever you don't understand right now, just ask for more, just show you, you know. You showed me, it was like over a period of time. But what I like about this verse is it says, "Then you will know the truth, and the truth will set you free."
Amen.
I just love that. To me, that's just, "Oh, thank you, Lord."
Hence the truth.
Yeah.
And then someday, you'll know that Jesus is the truth.
Yeah.
He's the only truth.
Exactly.
The Bible is completely about Jesus.
At the end...
He's all truth.
At the end, in, in the book of Revelation, Revelation 3 verses 2 and 4, "Be watchful and strengthen the things which remain, that are ready to die." And it's Jesus speaking to the church at Sardis. And He's telling them, "Don't let go of what you have known by being careless, by being lackadaisical, by not being in the Word, by not being in prayer, by not being in My presence." You can lose what you have in the Lord.
Well, there's so much deception today.
Absolutely.
And, and we have to be, we have to be vigilant.
And He's...
Well, the only way we can be vigilant is if we're in His Word.
That's right. We have to know.
So, you've got to stay in His Word.
Valerie, how old were you when you, you committed your life to Christ?
Oh, I was in my late 30s.
You know, something that really bothers me is that...
I was closer to 40.
You know, I accepted Christ when I was eight, but I married a man that wasn't married, and I know I wasn't living a Christian life for 30, for 30 years, for 30 years. And I keep thinking about that. And I know that the blood of Jesus forgives us or all, all that stuff. And, but, you know, it comes up all the time. I keep thinking, "What would it have been like for those 30 years if I'd have been walking close to the Lord?" You know? That time is lost.
Only look backward. Throw it off at some point.
You can look backward as much as you want. You're not, it's not going to get you anywhere.
No, it'd be like a hamster in a cage. Says we're talking about hamsters. But, yeah, I just, I just wonder how my life with Jim would have been different if he'd have been a Christian when we got married.
It wasn't supposed to be any different.
I think, I don't, but he became, you know, I led him to the Lord. Because I knew what needed to be done, because I'd been raised, you know, in that kind of an assessment. But I hadn't walked in that life for 30 years. You know, and it's just...
Well, I think that's part of the consequences of not coming to the, to the Lord all the way. But you learned.
Yeah.
And so, um, the second book that I'm writing, it's taken me a long time to do it. But it, it's, it's for my children and grandchildren, all of the mistakes that I made. And I think one of them in there is basically talking about what I was like if I had to come to the Lord when I was supposed to. We wouldn't see the chaos in our family that we see today. You know, we, because we're not in the Lord, and our kids are watching us, then they tend not to be in the Lord, you know. So, when I did come to the Lord, my kids actually saw it. They saw the transformation. You know, I started cleaning the house. I read that book, "Pigs in the Pollen." I started eliminating so much stuff in my house. And I told Ron, "The video games and those videos that you got, I said, "Get rid of them." I said, "Because we're not going to have that in the house anymore." And he didn't, and I said, "And if you don't get rid of them," I said, "I gave them a date. They have to all be gone by this. If they're not gone, they're going to get broke." Well, he didn't believe me. So, he called himself hiding them, right? He was, he was at school, I started cleaning the house. He came home, went in there, and he started screaming, "Ah, you tore up my..." I said, "I gave you, I told you to get rid of them." I said, "We're cleaning house." I said, "There's, there's a new boss in town." I don't, I don't even know if he remembers that. But he said, "Those weren't mine." I said, "Well, that should have gave you even more reason to give them back to who they belong to. They're gone now." So, I had to put my foot down, and it disrupted the whole house. And that Scripture that came to me is that I didn't come to bring peace. You know, when Jesus is saying, "I didn't come to bring peace." All of those Scriptures started coming to me.
That's when you...
I said, "Oh, this is what He was talking about." Because when you start doing things His way, you're going to rock a whole lot of people's boats. Especially if they live in the same house.
Well, he walked into the temple, and he cleaned house.
Yeah.
You know, so...
But I was, at that point, when I did that, a lot of my friends thought I was crazy. But at that point, I figured, "What do I have to lose?" You know? I don't waste it all of these years not knowing. I'm getting ready to really know who Jesus is. So, I'm going to do everything I can to live according to His Word, because I really want to know Him. And so, I got rid of a whole lot of stuff. My mother, at that time, had stored boxes of 78 albums. Remember those?
Oh, yeah.
My uncle was a collector. When he passed away, he gave them all to her. And it was like, you name it, he had them. And I said, "Ma, you need to come get these." I said, "I'm getting ready to get rid of them." "Well, I don't have anywhere to put them. Can you just hold on to them a little bit longer?" And she forgot about them, and I got rid of them. And when she came over, she said, "What happened to those?" I said, "They're gone." She said, "Do you know how much those were worth?" And I'm thinking, "I don't know." I said, "But I'm cleaning the house." I said, "I'm getting ready to start something new." And she was mad at me. But I did it. I got rid of all of that stuff. I didn't want nothing in my house that was going to be demonic.
I had to do that too, Valerie.
Yeah. So, has anybody ever read that book, "Pigs in the Pollen"?
You know what? You're, you are a great testimony to your family for doing that. They will never, ever forget that.
Yeah. Well, Ron won't forget, I know.
You were doing them all a favor.
Yeah.
Everything's out of our house too, believe me.
Yeah. So, um, anyway, this passage in the New Testament where Jesus is speaking to the Jews who had believed in Him. And it read, and, you know, Jesus said to those "who believed in Him, 'If you abide in My Word, you are My disciples indeed, and you shall know the truth, and the truth shall make you free.'" So, we want to interpret it a little bit more. So, if you go down to A, it says, "If you hold to My teachings, you are really My disciples." So, commitment to Jesus' teachings. Jesus emphasizes the importance of adhering to His teachings. It's not enough to merely just believe in Him. True discipleship involves a commitment to living according to His words and command. And that's the second hardest thing that I had to learn when I became a Christian. Because we tend to think if we have the head knowledge, we're good. But you've got to have the application that goes with that head knowledge. Does that make sense, Veronica?
Yes, it does.
You know, because I know a lot of people that know the Bible really well, but they don't, there's no application.
Well, my grandfather, he was a Christian. And I should have have, because I used to go to a Christian church when I was younger. And so, he would give, I would... Whenever I didn't understand anything, I would go to him. And he would, and he was my mentor. I should have, I should have gotten saved back then, because I was in my, I was 19? 19 or 18, around there, was when I started going to a Christian church. He wouldn't go, but he had his Bible right there, and he would read it, and, but, you know...
But He certainly left an impact on you.
Yes, He did.
Yeah.
And now, and now, when I got saved, I was, I was in my early, I was 30. I was 30 years old when I got saved. And, and, and He was proud of me. He was still alive. But now, that, now He's gone, and I miss Him. Because I would always call Him and say, "Grandpa, what, I don't understand this and this. Can you help me?" Because I would always call him and say, Grandpa, what, I don't understand this and this, can you help me? And he would, he would, he would give me, you know, over the phone.
So, another point here is that genuine discipleship, uh, underscores the difference between. Superficial belief and genuine discipleship. Faithful followers of Jesus believe in him and continuously abide by his teachings daily. So, this is a comment. That, or thought that I had. In other words, taking off your old self. Your old simple ways and putting on the new nature. That you received after you were born again is significant in your role as a born-again Christian. And. A lot of times. My, uh. Friends also saw some transformation. And they would always remind me of stuff that I, I did some horrible stuff as a kid. They would always remind me, uh, of stuff that I did. I said, yeah, that's what I did. And I said, but I'm not like that now. I said, I'm changing. And, um. So. If you, if you become a Christian. A year ago. And you take a, a, a look at your life. And the pattern of life. Can you personally see any changes? Okay. Because you should be constantly growing, and every year, you should constantly be looking closer and closer to the Lord. Looking like him. And becoming and having the mind that he has.
The Bible reminds me, reminds me of, Mom, you came a long way.
Oh, absolutely. I'm completely transformed. As a matter of fact. I, I had, uh. The last pastor I had. I don't know if he was prophesying to me, or if he knew something about my life before now. But he looked at me one day and he said. God completely transformed you. And I'm thinking, okay, what did he know about me before? I never asked him, but he said it was such certainty. Like he knew, like he knew something. And I don't know if it was something he heard, or something somebody told him. But he said, he's even rewired the way you think. And I'm thinking about it, and I said, you did it. You know, I don't even think the way I used to. And I remember this friend that I had in high school, she was wild. And I knew that I, eventually, I was gonna have to stop hanging around with her. She was doing some stuff I just didn't wanna do. You know, and it, and it wasn't about my relationship with the Lord at that point. I just knew morally that wasn't right, you know? Um. I didn't run into her. She moved. Out of the state. And then she came back into the state. And we had lunch. And it was like she was a stranger. And she said. You're not, you're not valid. I said, no, I said, I'm changed. You know, over the years, I've changed. You know, and I explained to her, you know, I had a relationship with the Lord. She wouldn't have anything else to do with me. We never talked again after that. Cause she was expecting the old me. And she got the new me instead.
You know what, though? You could have planted the seed just in that short time.
Yeah.
You don't know.
Yeah. So, uh, turn to, there's a sheet that I gave everybody with these little circles at the bottom.
Valerie, and, and let me add one thing to what we just did.
There's one?
Um, we talked about the Living Translation. I'm gonna read that directly to you.
Okay.
Jesus said to the people who believed in him. You are truly my disciples if you remain faithful to my teachings. And you will know the truth, and the truth will set you free.
Thank you. What version is that?
That's the Living Translation. That's the one she has.
That she has, okay. The one that Pastor's brother gave you.
That's pretty correct.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so. A lot of us. Uh, I think a, a lot of people who are actually Christians. Have problems putting on the new person versus the old.
Okay.
Okay? So, that's why I have these sheets. It's on page, well, it's the one with the big blue circle at the bottom. So, if you look at the first one. It says, uh, the concept of putting on the new man, or new woman, in our case. Is addressed in several, uh, New Testament scriptures. Primarily, the writings of the Apostle Paul, and the key passages are found. In Ephesians four twenty-two through twenty-four, and Colossians three nine and ten. So, let's take a look at Ephesians four twenty-two through twenty-four. Somebody wanna read that? Nice and loud for us?
I'll read it.
So, I say this.
So, we're starting at twenty-two, not seventeen? Cause this, this is printed starting at seventeen.
It sure is. That's my error. Just go ahead and read seventeen.
Okay. So, I say this and affirm in the Lord, that you are to no longer walk just as the Gentiles also walk. In the futility of their minds. Being darkened in their understanding, excluded from the life of God. Because of the ignorance that is in them, because of the hardness of their heart. And they having become callous have given themselves up to indecent behavior. For the practice of every kind of impurity with greediness. But you did not learn Christ in this way. If indeed you have heard him, and you have been taught in him, just as truth is in Jesus, that. In reference to your former way of life, you are to rid yourself of the old self, which is being corrupted. In accordance with the lust of deceit. And that you are to be renewed in the spirit of your minds, and to put on the new self. Which, in the likeness of God, has been created in righteousness and holiness of truth.
Okay. And as I was growing as a new Christian. You have the Holy Spirit on the inside of you. So, when you're getting off the path of where you're supposed to be, the Holy Spirit convicts. It gives you this feeling like, oh, I just messed up. Right? Everybody's been convicted, right? Have you ever been convicted? So, don't grieve the Holy Spirit by ignoring him. You just repent. And keep it moving. Stay on the path. Somebody wanna read Colossians, chapter three, verses nine and ten?
Do not lie to one another. Since yours, you stripped, stripped of the old. Have with, self with its evil spir- spirits. And have put on the new self, which is being rewarded to a true acknowledgement. According to the image of one who created, create it.
So, in Ephesians four twenty-two. It says, putting off the old self, this involves renouncing the former way of life characterized by some. Uh, sinful behaviors and attitudes. The old self is associated with corrupt and deceit of desires. Okay, then go to page two of that, putting off the new man, old, and woman. Uh, somebody wanna read that first triangle there, renewal of the mind?
Renewal of mind. A critical part of this transformation is the renewal of the mind. This means adopting a new way of thinking that aligns with God's truths and values.
Okay, and then putting on the new self. The new self represents a renewed identity in Christ. Characterized by righteousness and holiness. This new self is created to reflect God's character. So, I, what I wanna say there is a lot of times. You know, we have this information. Uh, when people give their life over to the Lord. The next thing I always tell them when they do that, is don't just give your life to the Lord and not go to church. Don't forsake the assembly of the saints. You need to get in a church that is going to disciple you. Right? Because if it's out of sight, it's out of mind. If you don't have, you can get saved and not have God's word before you, you'll still be acting like the world. Because you're not being discipled. Right? I think we all have a lot of, people who claim to have been saved, but they're not. Getting fed anywhere, so. That's a whole nother story within itself.
For people that come to church on Sunday and you see them doing stuff that. You know, they shouldn't be doing the rest of the week, and it's like. Okay. You know, what kind of a witness is that? You know, you're, we're supposed to be a witness for Christ.
Yeah, but see, if they don't, if they're not coming to a box like this. If they're not coming and being there. Nobody's teaching them. Then it's like a two-year-old that you don't train them. You just let them do what they wanna do.
Right.
When I came back to really following the Lord after my kids were practically raised, and. I knew that I didn't have to worry about not having a father for my kids, because I was afraid to go to church. Because he never went to church. And so. Anyway, after the kids were raised, I started going back to church. And. Also, I, I joined Bible Study Fellowship. Which is a very, very in-depth, pre. Teaching of God's word. I mean, really in-depth. And that's when I really, really got to know God, is when I really got into God's word. And that was more important even than, than the relationship with the people. It was important to get into a relationship with the Lord. And that's, and that then in turn caused me to go to a Billy Graham Crusade and be in the choir. Which that caused Dion to come with me to the Billy Graham Crusade and sit with me. Which then caused him to accept Christ. And then, I could say, okay, you're the priest of our home. So, you choose the church that we're gonna go to. And he chose the best church. It was a vineyard. Church. And boy, what a difference than the church that I'd been brought up in. And he's chosen every church ever since.
Praise the Lord.
Praise the Lord.
Praise the Lord. So, if, if you have a loved one, or somebody that you led to the Lord. Don't just lead them to the Lord and leave them. Give them all the tools and the information they need. Okay, now your next move is. Need to find a Bible leading churches' teaching. Need to be baptized. You know, because now, that's a symbol of what you confessed. You know? And. You know, just give them what they need to know. And, and let, and let them make their own choices after that. Um. And, and, and try to be a good witness before them. I'll never forget. Um, I was still a new Christian. And I was asked to teach the tenth grade. And I didn't wanna teach, cause I didn't think I could teach. And people would say, well, we see things in you that you don't see. And I'm thinking, hmm, cause I'm still sinning. I need to be teaching. You know, I'm thinking to myself. And, um. So, I decided I was going to teach. And I'm gonna put my best foot forward to try to, to do what I know that's right. And at that particular time, I had a gentleman over for Thanksgiving dinner. And my kids were there. And I went out and I bought this big bottle of wine. And I didn't think there was anything wrong with drinking wine, right? Jesus drank wine. And so, uh, when I brought the wine in and put the groceries away, Ron opens up the refrigerator. He said, you got wine? I said, yeah. He said, ooh, and you teach Sunday School? And that convicted me. And I didn't buy it anymore after that, you know, out of the mouths of babes, you know? And not that, that I really think drinking is, is, is a problem, but if it's going to. Uh, affect him like that. Then I better leave it alone. Cause you know, there's a scripture that says, if you cause your brother to fall. You know, you're held accountable for that. So, uh. So, you know, my life just started changing. You know, the Lord was using everybody to get me in line. I'm thinking. And it was the way he said it. Ooh, and you teach Sunday School?
I, my, I have a grandson that always says, I can't believe you did that, Grandma. You know, and he's a monster.
We have grandkids that say that to both of us.
Okay, so, Colossians three nine. Somebody wanna read that?
Renouncing sinful practices. Believers are instructed to abandon practices assisted with the old self, such as lying and other sinful behaviors.
And adopting the new self?
Adopting the new self, the new self that is continually being renewed. In knowledge, growing to reflect the image of God, the Creator. This reflects ongoing spiritual growth and transformation.
Okay, so, the practical application. Somebody wanna read that?
Spiritual renewal. Embrace a continuous process of spiritual renewal. Allowing God's word and the Holy Spirit to transform your mind and heart. Behavioral change. Actively work on shedding old habits and behaviors. That are inconsistent with your new identity in Christ. Reflecting God's character. Strive to live in a way that reflects God's righteousness and holiness. Demonstrating His love and truth in your daily life.
Okay, so these passages collectively emphasize, uh, the transformative journey of Christians. Uh, nobody is like this overnight, okay? It's a constant renewal. Uh, encouraging, uh, us to leave behind our old ways and embrace the new life that mirrors the character and image of God.
Someone once said, if you're not growing in Christ, you're backsliding.
Well, everybody should be growing.
Yeah.
Yeah, everybody should be there. So, I, uh, so these are things that we need. In order to petition for needs. We need to know who God is. And we need to know that we're striving, um. To become his, his, his friend. Because he says, my friends are no longer my servants. And that he shares with us, as his friends, the truth. He reveals to us. He's constantly revealing things to us. Um, so, transformation, knowing the truth, involves an inner transformation that aligns. A person's life with God's will and purpose. And so, if you're in the word on a continual basis. You'll know what God's will and purpose is, because he reveals it to you in his word. So, somebody wanna read letter C on page four?
Freedom from sin, the truth that Jesus refers to as liberating. It frees individuals from sin, falsehood, and spiritual ignorance. The freedom is both a present reality and an eternal promise. Spiritual liberation. The freedom mentioned here is primary, primarily spiritual. It signifies being set free from the power of sin and death. Enabling believers to live a life of righteousness and purpose, in accordance with God's will.
Okay, somebody wanna read contextual background?
Audience, Jesus is addressing Jews who had started to believe in him. This shows that even among those who believed, there was a need for more, for more profound commitment and understanding. Broader context, in John eight's broader context, Jesus, Jesus dialogues. About his identity and mission, and faces opposition from religious leaders. This passage emphasizes the importance of true faith and the liberating power of Jesus' message.
Okay, and so, the practical application. Living out Jesus' teachings. Uh, believers are called to actively live out Jesus' teachings daily. Which involve love, forgiveness, humility, and obedience to God's commands. Now, let me ask this question. What, what if you're doing all of these things and you mess up? Veronica? What should you do?
Pray?
Pray what? Okay, remember this. Nobody's perfect, even when you become a Christian. You still have an old nature. Okay, so if you mess up, the Bible says that he's faithful and just to forgive us. So, we have to do what?
Ask for forgiveness.
Repent.
Repent.
And then ask for forgiveness. Okay. So, um. Experience of freedom by adhering to Jesus' words. Believers can experience true freedom. From guilt, shame, and the power of sin. Leading to a life of peace, joy, fulfillment, in God's presence. Now, let me, let me share this. To repent means to turn away, right? You got some people with the thinking. That, okay, well, if I sin, he's gonna forgive me anyway.
That's right.
So, they have premeditated sins.
So, I keep on doing.
No, they premeditate, I'm gonna do this, and I know it's wrong, and then afterwards, I'll just ask God to forgive me. No. That's not true repentance. I just wanted to make that clear. You know anybody like that?
I used to hear it all the time.
Yeah.
Teenagers, well, if I get an abortion, that's okay. That baby goes to heaven and I'll just get forgiven. And first time I heard it, I just. I, I think I just sat there with my mouth open going, what?
Yeah.
What? But it's.
It's a common thing. It's a common.
Well, a lot of people think like that.
Yeah.
Just like, there's a school of thought.
That way.
That because Jesus died for my sins, I'm good.
But there's still consequences for sin. Even though you repent.
But it's not an automatic thing.
Place I could go.
You're not saved automatically just cause Jesus died on the cross for sins. You have to be active, you have to accept the gift first.
First to accept.
Yeah, and a lot of people don't, don't think that.
No, the whole, the whole country, I think, doesn't think it.
Yeah.
It's, everybody, any funeral you go to, he's in a better place.
I know!
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and, anything, any situation, are you going to heaven? Well, yeah, I'm a good person.
Right.
You know, I mean, people don't understand.
That Billy Graham more than anything, that people thought, because they were good.
Yeah.
They were gonna go.
I know a lot of good people. I mean, really, really good people.
Yeah.
But, you know, they, they think that they're going to heaven, you know, and it's like. It, it, works do not get you into heaven, and that's basically kinda what they think. You know, my good works, the way I live my life, you know, that's gonna. And it's not gonna get you into heaven.
I was thinking of the Sound of Music the other day. You know that song that she sang? I must have done something good in my childhood, because I'm living such a blessed life, you know? And, and that is, that is the true reason why Martin Luther. Left the Catholic Church.
Exactly.
Exactly.
Works versus salvation.
Martin Luther key?
Galatians.
Yeah, he did.
Yeah.
I can remember when I was in a college class, now, this was actually in a Baptist church, but Glenn, he was an amazing godly man, and. He, he went to the Lord early, but. He do this, this thing of these two little cliffs like this, you know, like here we are here, and here's God. And I know you've seen this thing, and then the cross goes across it, and the only way that you can get to God is through Jesus. And people don't realize that. You know, they say, yeah, I believe in God, you know, I'm a good person, I'm a, but that's not. And if you have a personal relationship with, my life has changed so much in fourteen years. Uh, I got baptized again here in this church, and my life has just really changed, because I really. Know now what it is to live that life. And you know, generally, accepted Christ two weeks before he died. But I wanna tell everybody, I have never seen such peace over somebody in my whole life. As I saw over that man in that, in that bed as he was dying. You know, the peace of God, and even my dad, my dad was doing pretty well then and was driving. My dad was there every day. I was still working and going back and forth, but he, he said, Penny, when I talked to him, he says. He, he's, he, Christ has saved him. He says, I can see that peace over him. There was like an aura around him, you know, and, and I have never seen anything like that on anybody before. But there was, you know, and. But there was, you know, and he never talked about how bad he was doing, or, he never complained about having heart failure or anything the whole time that we were married. And here he was, accepted Christ, and he was just like, he was ready. You know, it was like, I wanted to go with him when he was that ready, but, but God can give you that peace. See, we're still here, but He can give all of us that peace that my husband had.
I saw it in my mother. She never complained. I knew she was, wasn't, she was in pain, you know? But I saw it, He took her gracefully. And I remember the last night that she was alive. She was in so much pain, I just said, "Lord, just take her," you know, "just take her." And I talked to my youngest brother later, he said he was praying the same prayer the same time I was praying it, and I woke up that morning and she was gone. And it was like a relief, I don't have to watch her in pain anymore. That, to me, that was torture for me, to have to watch her in that kind of pain, you know?
We learn so much from people who are approaching death, if we just pay attention. Our son, when he died of pancreatic cancer, one of his biggest things to say is, "Do not listen to any kind of music except Christian music. All the rest of the music is not worth anything." Says, "The only thing that people should ever listen to is Christian music."
Your son was amazing, because I remember he worked at church in the sound booth and stuff, you told me, didn't he? Even when he was sick, as long as he could do it, you know, and it was like, what a testimony that was, that he was, kept on going.
Yeah, the last two weeks, he couldn't do much, but he worked, and he said he talked to five different people at work about Jesus, and he stayed on the praise team at church, and he also worked the booth.
I remember that.
On the praise team, yeah. He was a real testimony.
You know, I've never, I've seen many people pass away, but my mother, and David says, Pastor David said he's seen this before, she was reaching.
Yeah.
She had her arms up, you know, and she kept going like this on both of her arms, and I'm going, does she have wings? And then she kept saying, "Jesus, Jesus, Jesus," you know, and I don't know that she was hearing my voice anymore, I think she was hearing what was coming, you know? Because she even said my dad's name too, and, but it was just, it was, she passed away the next day, and I wasn't, it was on a Sunday and I was at church. And I happened to be here, I don't know if any of you are here, but seven o'clock, my brother called right after church and said, "Mom had passed away." But I knew that she was okay. There was such a peace about her, even though she was, I go, "What is she reaching for? I want to see it." You know, I want to see it, you know, she was seeing something fantastic, you know?
What about that word she used, beautiful?
Beautiful, yeah. She kept saying, "Beautiful, beautiful, Jesus, beautiful." You know, and I'm going, "Oh, my gosh, Mom, take me with you."
I can use some beautiful.
Yeah, you know, but, but that's what we all want, you know, I want that for everybody. You know, as Christians, we need to tell everybody about Jesus so that, this is not home, this is a horrible place to live, you know? So we just have to, we're supposed to tell people about Jesus when we get a chance. And, you know, so many times I think we all, we all have, I know I've missed opportunities, you know, but you can't beat yourself up, you have to get up, it's like a batter striking out, you know, you struck out, so get back up to the plate and, you know, hit another homerun or hit a run or something, you know?
That's a really good point, Penny, because I have often felt really guilty about certain things that I had done, or not sin even, but just missed opportunities or whatever. And I was listening to Joyce Meyer one day, and I only listened to her for five minutes, but this is what she said, "Don't beat yourself up every time you mess up. Just ask God to help you do better." And I have fallen back on that, those sweet words often, because God does not condemn us. When I told you the story last week about what I had done with a coworker,
Exactly.
In not telling her exactly the words the Lord told me to tell her, which were crazy and impossible, and what if you don't do it? And, or anything, or lesser things. And in that situation, and I just touched on it lightly, but he was so sweet. He was sweet. He never did a, well, you messed that up, I mean, there was nothing like that. He was sweet, it was like, he watched play out what he knew was gonna happen, you know?
But he didn't condemn?
Absolutely not, no, not at all. In fact, I felt great love, it was really incredible, incredible situation, but, don't beat yourself up, you know?
You hear that?
Ask Him to help you do better.
Just human beings is all we are.
The enemy will beat you up, no problem.
Okay, so how did your class go? You said you were gonna teach high school class, how did it go?
Oh, yeah.
Was it good?
So, at that time, Ron was in the 10th grade.
Okay.
And the pastor at that time is actually the one that signed my book. He was getting his doctorate degree, and his doctorate degree was on outreach. So they, I don't know if you guys ever heard of this thing called faith evangelism?
What is it?
It's called faith evangelism.
No, I haven't.
So he had the whole church involved in this thing, it's a whole program that you can get, and it's called faith evangelism. It's what, eight or 10 weeks of the church being trained how to go out, and they set you up in teams of three, and they use the visitors list, and people who have visited our church before, and we haven't seen them, those missing in action, those are homebound, and then at the end of the course, everybody gets assigned one of those people, and their homes is called, and asked, "Would you like someone to come by and pray?" And if they say yes, they send a team out. Well, I got involved with that, and, I said that to say, I started teaching, anyway, I started teaching the class, and because we had so many people to come to the church, because the whole church was going out on Saturday and doing it, we usually have 300 in regular worship, because it was a mid-sized church, but we had that many in Sunday School, that's how the church had grown. And so I got a chance to witness that, and I'm like, wow, just because we went out and prayed for people, people came, you know? So we had an overflow of 10th graders from these families that were coming in. So the 10th grade teacher had like 20 something kids, and it was too many for him to teach. So then that's when they asked me, you know, "Would you, would you, would you teach?" And I was saying, you know, at that time, and I'm thinking, okay, I know I have to change, my life is changing, and I knew my life was changing. So I just, I took the week of faith. And so they were getting, so Ron knew that I was gonna be teaching, he said, "I want to be in your class." And the other guy who was teaching the 10th graders, I said to Brother Brad, "Could you take Ron?" Because we used to fight in the morning, because he was so slow, and I remember one winter, he didn't want to go to church, I said, "Come on, Ron, we gotta go." And he claimed he couldn't find his shoes. And I said, "You know, the devil is alive." I said, "I don't care if you have to wear my shoes, we're leaving." And I drug him out of the house with no shoes, in the winter, in the snow. And people would say, "Well, where's his shoes?" I said, "We had to come to church," and he knew that last night when I told him to get ready. So I said, "If he's gonna be crazy, I'm gonna be crazy." So he came to church, and the people were looking at me, I said, this is the only way I could get him to do it, so that's how I did it. So I told Brother Brad, "I don't want Ron in my class." I said, "Because we argue in the morning, and he's gonna upset the whole class when I'm trying to teach." So he said, "That's a blessing that he wants to be in your class, Mr. Marshall," and he used to say, and I'm thinking, "Uh-uh." I said, "Okay." So, we didn't want to disturb the kids, so we had these little names that we put in, and each kid had to pass the cup around without looking, and whichever teacher they picked, that's whose class they were gonna be in. So everybody got a kick out of that, and I'm thinking, "Lord, please don't let Ron pick my name." Why did he pick my name? And I said, "Okay." So that helped me actually, because he was my son, he was always telling me stuff like, "Ooh, you teach, you know, you drink it," you know, so I said, "Well, maybe the Lord did that on purpose." But anyway, that's how, that's how I started, that's when I first started teaching.
Did you have him?
Did I what?
Did you have him in your class?
Yeah, he was in my class, because he picked me, he was all excited about it, you know?
Somebody had to keep her accountable.
Well, you know, God is a way of doing things.
And it's usually the people who are not going in church are not in the Word, but they're watching you.
Yes.
And they'll hold you, they'll know me coming.
And it was funny, because at that time, it was a lot of older women in the church, and so they were always watching me, they would send me little notes down the road, you know? About be pure, and I'm thinking, these, they sending me this stuff, you know, I said, "Oh, they holding me accountable." So God is amazing, that's all I can say.
Yes, that He is.
All right, so the last little point here is pursue truth. Christians are encouraged to seek and embrace the truth found in Jesus, which leads to spiritual growth and a deeper relationship with God. So John 8:31 encapsulates the essence of discipleship, a call to live by Jesus' teachings, which leads to a profound understanding of divine truth and the experience of spiritual freedom. Okay, so bring in our needs to God, somebody want to read that? We're not gonna finish.
If you hold to Christ's teachings, you will not wait to ask for His help as a last resort. He will be your first source of help. You will seek the Scriptures first when you have needs. This is the third good reason to have quiet time for reading and meditating on God's Word and fellowship with Him. Needs and problems can make you realize your dependence on God. He wants to meet your needs. In a quiet time, you can bring your needs before God.
Okay, so we know what petition prayer is from when we were doing the different modes of prayer. And then I have on here number three, the prerequisites that strengthen your petitions to God. So, so all of these scriptures help us when we go forth for asking God for something for ourselves. And it always points to His Word, so knowing His Word is vital.
When we were, a few comments were made about everybody in the culture thinking they're going to heaven. I mean, our culture is biblically illiterate.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, absolutely biblically illiterate, and, and when you think about the way, when we were growing up, at Christmas time, you heard Christmas carols everywhere. On the radio, you got in the car, it was on the radio in the car, you sang them in school, we had Christmas programs, even in public school, but Christmas carols were everywhere, and they are scriptural. And everybody sang them, whether they went to church or not, and everybody memorized them, and you, it's God's Word, so they were, you're taking in truth, biblical truth, even though you're not sitting in church with the Bible open. And, and the Word of God was in our culture in other ways, the Ten Commandments were in the classroom. You know, and when I went to the public school, the principal came on the PA system every morning, we said the Our Father. You know, and my teacher sat there with this big giant Bible on her desk, and she, 5th grade, and she opened it every morning, and she didn't preach, she opened it and she read Psalm 23 to us, and that's how I learned it.
Wow.
So the Word of God was everywhere, we may have forgotten that, and younger generations don't even know it. But that's one reason why people were not so biblically illiterate. Plus people, I don't know what the percentages were, but probably 60 to 70% of people did go to church somewhere, you know, at least sometime.
Yeah.
Where all of that has been drastically changed in America.
Yeah, I knew students that would tell me they had never stepped a foot inside the church before.
You know, Pastor Dave said to me one time when I went to him about a situation, and I was teaching Bible study, and, not here, it was in my neighborhood, and there was a demonic manifestation in the Bible study one day. And the other believer, I could tell that the other believer in the group saw it as well as me. Anyway, I came to Pastor Dave about it, I felt it was, I was out of my pay grade in that. This particular situation, it was a real sweet person that manifested it, and she wasn't aware of it. So anyway, one, I remember this, he said, actually, when he was talking to me, I was like this the whole time, and I went home and typed it all up, and I'm so glad I did. I have referred to his wisdom many times in those kinds of situations. But one of the things he said to me is, Laurie, Satan's goal is always to disrupt the Word of God. Satan's goal is always to shut down the Word of God. That's what's defeating him, the Word of God. And his goal is to shut it down in any situation, and I've never forgotten that, and I see it, you know?
Everywhere.
Everywhere.
Starting with no more prayer in the school.
Exactly.
Starting.
Exactly, and people fell for it.
They did.
So anyway.
I don't even think kids know Pledge of Allegiance anymore, we used to say it every, every morning.
They say it every morning at the intermediate.
They say it here.
A lot of schools put it, have put it back in.
But I was in a secular school, you were in a Catholic school.
I went to both.
Okay, but they prayed at my school in Tucson, I grew up in Tucson. And they prayed, they had a prayer in the morning.
Right.
We'd stand up and say the Pledge of Allegiance, and then they'd say a prayer over the PA system.
Yeah.
You know, and it's like.
The principal over at the elementary school in Sarita has one minute, it's not prayer, but one minute of silent meditation.
A lot of students need that a lot.
At least it's something.
Yeah, you know, and they always say, "Well, you're offending somebody because you're praying, and maybe they don't pray like you do." Well, just like you say, have a minute of silence, you know?
And so kids can pray the way they want.
Exactly, you know, and say, you can pray, you can meditate, you can do whatever you want, you know, but don't throw away with everything.
Just ignore, right.
Well, that's the goal, they wanted to do away with everything.
Satan sure does.
That was the goal, shut God down, there is no God.
He has come to steal, kill, and.
That's right, that's right.
Well, here we see how important the Word of God is. Here it's saying that your word is a lamp to my feet and a light to my path. This is so true.
Yep.
Because we actually live in darkness, and we need Him to light our way through His Word.
Who is Jesus?
Yeah.
The Word.
The Word.
Jesus is the.
Is the light of the world.
That's right.
And so through His Word, God provides guidance and direction in life. So, and then the next one is 2 Timothy. "All Scripture is breathed out by God and profitable for what? Teaching? For reproof, for correcting people?
Exhortation.
For correction and for training in righteousness, that the man of God may be completely equipped for every good work." So this particular scripture is vital for instruction and spiritual maturity. Somebody want to read Joshua 1:8?
"The book of the law shall not depart from your mouth, but shall meditate on, you shall meditate on day and night, so that it may be careful, so that you may be careful to do accordingly, all that is written in it, for you will make your way prosperous, and then you will have good success." This underscores the importance of constant engagement with Scripture to understand and follow God's will.
Now, when I was raising my kids, let's see, the oldest one was 12.
How many children do you have?
Three.
Okay.
Ron is the youngest, so they, they were two and a half years apart. And I didn't grow up teaching them the Bible in the house, we didn't have devotions and stuff like that until... until I got saved and I started taking them to church. They didn't want to join that church, they hated it, because the dean at the school where they were going was a member of that church. And they had to see him.
There was that contact.
We don't want to go to that, Mr. Williams is there, do we have to see him, you know? So, they hated that church, so, you know, if, if, if you want to redo something in your life that the Lord is showing you to do, and it's got anything to do with His Word, and you have family members that fall, get ready for the war. But the Lord will show you how to navigate through it. So I remember when we, at, at the Baptist church, when they call, "Anybody want to come up for prayer?" at the end of the service, "Anybody want to come up, and you need a church home?" So everybody would go up there at the same time, and wherever you went, they would ask you, you know, "What are you here for?" So I said, "Well, we needed a church home." So I'm waving for the kids to come on up, you know, and they're dragging their, all their faces were tore up, you know, it was like, I was embarrassed, because they were, they were, all three of them were acting horrible, you know, like, you could just see it, you know how kids do. And, so then, at that time, they assigned you a family deacon who checks on you, and a Sunday school teacher. And I just remember, it was just like pulling teeth, it was, it was horrible. When, when I decided that I was going to find me a church home where my kids can grow in the Word, and, and they weren't used to that. So I just want to encourage you, if, you know, if you're trying to, to do something for your family, you know, to lead them to Christ, there's gonna be some opposition. You know, but just keep going, just ask the Lord to help you, just keep going. And eventually, people will respect you. So anyway, Joshua 1:8 tells us to meditate on a day and night. And whenever you meditate on a day and night, and you live in a house with children, or a husband who's not, and they see that you are hanging in there tough doing it, it's gonna put some questions in their mind, why is this so important? You know, even Ron has made comments to me, he said, "You still doing that?" You know, "You still working on that?" You know, he said, "Wow, you're really dedicated."
Working on that, I like that word, because we're all working on it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Something that's really helped me in staying in the Word is having the Bible open on my, on, on my island in the kitchen. And I have that book, Word for the Day, there, and I have different Scriptures that are called, some are called appetizers, some are called main meal, you know, and, and that kind of thing. And, but every time I walk in the kitchen, which is a lot of times, you know, women always do, and the Word is right there, and I've got a highlighter, and my glasses right there on the Bible, so that's right. It really, really helps.
I've got, I've got one in the office, one in my bedroom, and one on the little stand next to my chair, so there's always one, you know, where I can look at it or grab hold of it, or, you know.
That's awesome.
I heard Anne Graham Lotz talking on this topic a long time ago, and her, her mother, of course, they were missionaries in China, and, and the mother grew up as a missionary kid in China, Anne Graham Lotz's mother. But she had, and this was her suggestion for women, because they're so busy with kids and house and running and all of that, to have yourself, like you said, you have no children in your house, so your kitchen is not crazy. But she was directly speaking to women with children, and she said, "Get yourself a little desk, something you can use as a desk, a little table, a stool, a bench, something you can use as a desk. Put it in your bedroom, leave it there. Get a chair, anything that you can sit in to start with. Put your Bible on it and leave it on that table. Have your prayer journal next to it, your favorite devotionals, and leave them open." And she said, "If you can't, you know, don't feel like you have to spend money if you don't have money, you can use two chairs, one chair can be your table and one chair you sit on. But if you can do that and leave it open every time you go in there, it's going, you're gonna see it open." If you have one minute.
Yeah.
One minute before the kids are coming in the door.
One minute, one verse.
That's right, sit down and read it and spend that time. Anyway, I thought that was absolutely brilliant. I already have that situation, because I don't have kids either, but for anyone who has children.
And when people come to my house, I say, "This is not because I'm super spiritual or anything like that, that the Bible is open there."
It's a good location.
With those verses for treats, you know, for snacks, this kind of thing, so that I can snack on God's Word instead of something that's in the refrigerator.
There you go. And you'd be surprised, if you have other people living in the house with you, and they see that, who knows? They might be flipping through it, you know.
You never know, and people come into, to visit and come into my kitchen or something, want to lay something down there on the, on, on the island, they have to touch my Bible, actually push it out of the way so they can set it down, so it just makes them aware, you know.
I know I have an old Bible at the house, and Ron was going through it. And I have notes in there, little handwritten notes, and I have question marks about things. And a conversation would come up, and Ron said, "Yeah, you put that in your Bible with a question mark." You know, and I'm thinking, "Okay, he's been going through my Bible."
He didn't my notes.
So that's a good thing.
That's a good thing, that is a good thing.
But anyway, we are running out of time, so these are, number three, the prerequisites that strengthen your petitions to God. These are things that help you pray, because when you know the Word of God, it actually teaches you how to pray His will. And then the benefits of petition prayer, you know, it gives you spiritual connection, you're allowed to express your needs and desires, you can seek guidance, you can find comfort and peace. It builds your faith and, you know, and trust. It's an acknowledgement, and you get community support, actually. And, anyway, what does it mean to pray the Scriptures? Remember, we, we had a session on praying the Scriptures? When we were praying, so, so that's important, when you pray the Scriptures, you can't miss being in the will of God, you'll be in His will, because you're praying what the Scriptures are saying. And so, on the back, on page eight, there's how to pray the Scriptures. So I think everybody here was, were here when we did this. And that's.
Can I say one thing about the prayer petition? Our pastor did quite a bit, a large teaching on the prayer petition up in Washington when we were up there. And at the time, Dion was still working, and he had about six months left to work before he was gonna retire. And, and after that, the teaching on prayer petition, he wrote down his prayer petition, "I would like our house to be paid off by the time I quit working." That was his prayer petition. He found Scripture that supported that and prayed that Scripture every day. And then there were certain steps, you know, if it just didn't happen, leave you, anyway. Three months after, he started praying that, that prayer, and I thought he was crazy, but, but then I joined him. And so we were both praying that specific prayer petition. Three months later, our son and his wife came to visit us. And on the way home from the airport, they told Dion, and I was in bed, they told Dion, "We're gonna pay off your house." Because they were in that dot-com industry, and they had so much money, they didn't know what to do with it all. They paid off our house, $85,000 while they were there at our house. Dion came, came home, and he said, "Sue, Sue, you're not gonna believe what Jim and Lisa just did." I said, "They probably said they're gonna pay off our house." And, and ever since then, we have had a paid-for house.
Amen.
I mean, if.
Thank you, Jesus.
Prayer works.
Thank you, Jesus.
Amen. So, if someone would like to close this out in prayer? Glenn, you're welcome to anytime.
Lord God, we thank you so much for this time. We are coming to you with humility into your throne room, knowing that, that veil was torn, so that we can come directly into you with our prayer, just like you're our best friend, which you are. Thank you so much for this teaching, thank you so much for the sharing that goes on in this room, and the vulnerability, not only of every member of this group, but of our, of our leader, Val. And we thank you so much for her, Lord. We ask you to give us all an excellent week, Lord, and especially make us a blessing to everyone, everywhere we go. We love you, Lord, and we lift you high, and we praise you and glorify you in Jesus' name. Amen.
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 Can we have a small group with?